Good afternoon. I'd like to welcome each of you to our June 10th council meeting in the interest of time efficiency and ensuring that everyone who wishes to address the council is given the opportunity to do so, the following will apply to all comments made by the public. If you desire to be recognized by the chair, please fill out a request form and present it to the city clerk present here in the council chambers. Each speaker shall be allotted three minutes to address the council unless such time is extended by the mayor or by questions from council. Groups shall designate a spokesperson to avoid repetition of comments. Every effort will be made to avoid interrupting speakers. Thank you for participating in your city government. We ask that you please silence all electronic devices. With that, I'll call this meeting to order. We'd like to ask everyone to please stand for the invocations. Good to have Pastor David Nye from Christ Our Savior Fellowship Church to lead us on our invocation. Please remain standing after that for the pledge.
Let us pray. Our gracious heavenly Father, your word states in Psalm 27 verse 1, "Unless the Lord builds the house, they labor in vain who build it; unless the Lord guards the city, the watchmen stay awake in vain." Father, these council members in essence are the ones responsible for building and guarding our city based upon decisions they make as they chart a course for the future. I pray that you would give and bless each one and give this body the wisdom to make decisions that will benefit the cities of St. Cloud while practicing fiscal responsibility. And Lord, we ask this in the name of our precious Savior, the Lord Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you Pastor Nye. Please do we pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Mayor Blackwell?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Trace?
Here.
Councilmember Matheny?
Here.
Councilmember Cooper?
Councilmember Askew?
We have no presentations tonight, but we will recognize our city manager, Mr. Sturgeon, to update our agenda.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Public hearing, item 10, Resolution 2021-64R. I'd like to pull that off the agenda. It's been withdrawn by the applicant. Item number 10, 2021-064R, withdrawn by the applicant. And then also council action, item 1, it's also been withdrawn by the applicant.
Is that all?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. This brings us to our citizens forum. Any person who desires to comment on any item not on this agenda is provided this opportunity to address the city council. Each person is requested to complete a signing form to be provided to the presiding officer prior to or as soon as is practical thereafter the person addresses the council. When you come forward, please state your name and address for the record, and we ask that you please limit your comments to three minutes. Is there anyone that would like to speak during the citizens forum? If not, we'll come to our consent agenda. Yes? Please come forward.
Hello, Sandy Simone, S.I.E.M.O.N., 5465 Hanson Road, St. Cloud, Florida, 34771. My question tonight is, are we going to hear center late tonight? Is there enough people? I only see four, so I don't want to wait another hour and be told we're not doing it. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Whatever's on the agenda, we'll be hearing today.
Right, and Mayor, just again, as we've told you in the past, when there have been four council members, the applicants do have the opportunity to request that their item be continued. My understanding is none of the applicants on tonight's agenda have requested that, so we are proceeding with the agenda as prepared.
Thank you, sir. That brings us to our consent agenda. The next portion of tonight's meeting is consent agenda, which contains items that have been determined to be routine and non-controversial. If anyone in the audience wishes to address a particular item on the consent agenda, now is the opportunity for you to do so. Additionally, if staff or members of the city council wish to speak on a consent item, they have the same opportunity. First of all, are there any items on the consent agenda that the staff are wanting to address, or the council rather? Councilmember Matheny?
I'd like to pull E for a separate vote.
Would you state that again?
E?
E?
For a separate vote.
Are there any other items?
I want to discuss E as well.
Well, if that's it at this point, we will begin with item E. Councilmember Matheny?
Thank you. As you recall, I voted against the Florida Avenue Trail because, not because I think the trail is bad, I think the trail connection is great. I want a trail connection, just don't think Florida Avenue is the location to have it. I'm still concerned about that, and I just, one topic I didn't bring up to the council, and it's unfortunate that Mr. Cooper isn't here again, because he wasn't here when we voted for Florida Avenue either, but the likelihood of Ossile Engineering being able to wind a trail along the median, around the trees, and not kill the trees is slim to none, in my opinion, because the trail is going to have to get cut into the ground. It doesn't go on top of the ground. They have to cut down and put the boards, and I know the plan is to avoid the trunks of the trees, but you're going to hit the roots of the trees. So, you know, I just want council to think about that really hard, you know? I know the plan is to cull some of the trees that are not doing as well, but I'm just really concerned that you're not going to, in reality, be able to build the trail and not ultimately kill the trees. And I don't have anything against, you know, Ossile Engineering scope, or them doing the work, or anything. It's just Florida Avenue, I just don't feel like it's the right place. So, I would like to ask council if you'd be willing to entertain kind of an approval or a motion, but then a caveat to it, that if, as they go through design, and they really lay it out and have the survey and map the root systems, and they realize, and have an arborist evaluate it, and if they feel that they can't safely put the trail in the median, that they'll bring it back and we'll have another conversation. That's going to be my motion. And I'll hear what Mr. Trace has to say.
And is that a motion to approve with that caveat?
I mean, I don't think it's the right street, but it got approved at a previous council meeting.
Okay. That was my question, is are we going to be able to save the trees? And I feel like they've already adapted to not having just wide open green space underneath them with the road being there, so they're usually, can adapt to that situation a little more of having some roots, you know, called back and just kind of dealt with.
But you know, it's a wide trail.
Yeah.
It's a wide trail, and they're going to have to cut six or eight inches down and put the form boards. I just, I just don't think, in reality, I think on a plan document with a picture and a line, it sounds good, we're going to avoid these trees. I just think you're going to lose all the trees.
Okay, I'm fine with them pulling the plug if they get to a point and go, you know, this is not going to look, it's not going to look the way that it was presented to us. So, I'm fine with that caveat if you make that motion.
There's my motion.
Are we understanding that motion? Is there a problem with it, Mr. Reseris?
I don't, I don't think there's a problem with that. We understand the motion. I guess I'm looking for what would the council like to be the triggering effect before it comes back to you? Would you like, and I'm not sure, I'm not an engineer, so I don't know if there's a preliminary assessment they can do early on in the review process where they can address that, or whether that's something that can only be determined at the time that they've developed, you know, 60 or 70 percent of the plans for the project. I don't know.
Well, I, we'll leave it up to Ossile Engineering, but ask them to prioritize that, you know, like lay it out, evaluate the root structure, have an arborist evaluate it, and, you know, decide if the trees are going to make it or not make it. I just, my personal opinion, whenever I see this happen, the trees end up dying, you know, two years later, three years later, and then a hurricane comes and they all fall over because we've cut all the roots on one side of them.
So, are we, are we deciding, does this motion mean that we're going to let the staff and Ossile to work together, engineering to work together, and an arborist to make that decision?
Yeah, my motion was for Ossile Engineering to evaluate it, work with an arborist, and if they decide that it can't be done without damaging the trees, to bring, to come back to staff and say, hey, we got to come up with a new plan.
Mr. Sturgeon? Yes, thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to have Director Holtcamp talk a little about the arborist, we're using our city arborist. They've done some assessment. I don't think that's unreasonable. I just want to get her take on, because she's the project manager.
Yeah, Stephanie Holtcamp, Parks and Recreation Director. So, I just want to be clear, that's not a problem. We can have Ossile Engineering. So, at what stage do you want to see the plans? 20 percent, 40 percent, 50, 60 percent, or you just want?
I just want them, if they get into it and go, we're going to lose all these trees, put the brakes on and come back.
Okay.
That's what I want.
Okay.
You know, in their professional opinion, if we're going to lose the trees, if they're not going to be able to fit this trail in the way it was envisioned, then to bring it back.
And then you're okay when you, excuse me, when you say arborist, it's okay to use the city's arborist, or do you want an outside arborist?
I would like an outside arborist myself.
I think our, I think our own arborist is plenty qualified to do that.
Yeah, I mean, he's qualified, he's already evaluated all of the trees. I mean, whichever the council prefers, I'll do.
Any other opinion on that?
I'm, it's Keith, I would assume that's Keith. Yeah, I'm good with Keith doing it, but that's, I'm going to leave it up to the council, I guess, but.
I'm fine with the city's arborist doing the assessment.
City arborist it is.
So, to answer your question, we, I think we understand the motion.
Okay. Would anyone in the audience like to speak to this item? Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll on this item?
Yes, I second.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Councilmember Trace?
Aye.
Councilmember Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Cooper?
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Would anyone in the audience like to speak to any other item on the consent agenda? If not, could I entertain a motion and a discussion for the approval of the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
A second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Trace, a second, Dave, I'm sorry. Councilmember Dave, and a second for Councilmember Matheny. Madam Clerk?
Deputy Mayor Trace?
Aye.
Councilmember Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Cooper?
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries 4-0.
That brings us to public hearings. Madam Clerk, will you please read items 1 and 2?
Final public hearing for ordinance number 2021-25, an ordinance of the city council of the city of St. Cloud, Florida, assigning a future land use designation of commercial to approximately 9.99 acres identified as Thompson Grove Commercial located east of Live Oak Lane and south of East Earl O'Bronson Memorial Highway, providing for amending the official future land use map of the comprehensive plan, filing of the planning commission recommendation and proof of publication applicability and effect severability, copies on file and effective date. Final public hearing for ordinance number 2021-26, an ordinance of the city council of the city of St. Cloud, Florida, assigning a zoning district of highway business compatible with a commercial future land use designation change adopted by ordinance number 2021-125 for approximately 9.99 acres identified as Thompson Grove Commercial located east of Live Oak Lane and south of East Earl O'Bronson Memorial Highway, providing for entering the designation of the official zoning map, filing of the planning commission recommendation, proof of publication severability and effective date.
Are you wanting council action, item number 4 read also? Could you please read council action, item number 4?
Number 4. First reading and introduction for ordinance number 2021-
No, 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 council action.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Item number 4.
Discussion and possible action regarding approval for a conceptual master plan, concept plan revision for mixed-use property containing approximately 36.7 acres of land known as Thompson Grove.
Good afternoon. Andre Anderson, Community Development Director. This is the final public hearing for the Thompson Grove property. It's DRCK CP 21-00002 and ordinance 2021-25. This came before you previously, and the existing future land use is mixed use within the city. The proposed future land use is to go back to commercial. It's compatible with the surrounding area, and there are no adverse impacts to city facilities at this time. It's consistent with the strategic goal for growth management, and DRC at our meeting in February 21 recommend approval of ordinance 2021-25. The planning commission at their meeting on April 20th, '21 also recommend approval of ordinance 2021-25, and as the council do the same based on the 16 findings in our Land Development Code. Moving on to the associated zoning map amendment, this is to rezone the property to highway business from mixed use. Again, is mixed use is mixed in the city. The proposed zoning is highway business. The future land use, of course, would, it was mixed use, but is proposed to be commercial, again, compatible with the surrounding area, and no adverse to city facilities at this time, again, consistent with the growth management strategic goal. And staff at its meeting on February 20, February 18 recommend approval of ordinance 2021-25. Planning commission at their meeting on April 20 recommend approval of ordinance 2021-26. City council asks that you approve this item at this reading, consistent with the 16 findings over Land Development Code. And the correlating item is the consent, council action item for the conceptual master plan. This is to amend the concept plan to remove the property from the mixed-use plan. So, any questions, I have to answer them.
Thank you. Would anyone in the audience like to speak to this, to these items? If not, we'll have discussion under a motion by council. Ms. Matheny, is your light on?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'll make a motion to approve.
Could I have a motion to approve item number 2125?
Second.
We have a second motion from Councilmember Matheny, a second by Askew. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Cooper?
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Trace?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries 4-0.
Could I have a motion or discussion regarding ordinance number 2126?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember-
Askew.
Askew again, and Matheny, a second. Madam Clerk, oh, for, was anyone in the audience, we've already got that. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Cooper?
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Trace?
Aye.
Councilmember Matheny?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries 4-0.
Could I have a motion regarding council action number 4, the conceptual master concept plan revision?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Trace, a second from Councilmember Matheny. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Trace?
Aye.
Councilmember Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Cooper?
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries 4-0.
Thank you. That brings us to item number 3, back on public hearings.
First reading and introduction for ordinance number 2021-04, an ordinance of the city council of the city of St. Cloud, Florida, amending an ordinance which assign a zoning district of planned unit development, PUD, to the Anthem Park located east of Florida Turnpike and west of Old Canoe Creek Road, and describe further herein, providing for approval of the revision of the final master plan, providing for filing of the planning commission recommendation and proof of publication, severability, conflict and effective date.
Again, Andre Anderson, Community Development Director. This is the first reading of the Anthem Park PUD amendment and revision to the final master plan. It had come before you a couple times and was continued due to lack of a complete board, city council board, and the applicant requested continuance. It was continued from the prayer meeting to this meeting. And a little bit about the project, the existing zoning is planned unit development, and the future land use is medium density residential. It was approved back in 2004. It is a larger project of 216 acres total, and it was developed in five phases, and the total project at that time was what was to be up to 999 residential units. And just for any edification, the reason for that was to be under the threshold for a DRI. Trax G&M were permitted to use is included in the single-family attached houses and condominiums. That's what was approved for. This is a map of the original final master plan that shows Track G and Track M, which are on the east and west on the top of your screen. Track G is in green and Track M is in blue. The proposed amendment is additional townhomes as a permitted use and reduction from the Land Development Code parking requirements from 4.5 parking spaces to 3.94. That's what's currently in the agenda packet that you have been reviewing. This is a little more background about the project. Again, 216 acres of the original project, the portion on the top of the screen, Track G and Track M are the portions that are being discussed tonight. This is just a quick background again on how the project was approved initially, phase 4 of the final master plan for Track G was back in 2007 and 2010. It appeared to have expired, however, upon further review, based on the extensions of Senate Bill 360 and House Bill 7205, they received extensions on the project. Further background shows that phase 5 of the final master plan for Track M also expired, but then due to extensions based on Senate Bill 360 and House Bill 7207, they received some extensions on the project. Now, they're moving forward. This was a plan that was submitted to us on March 11 that showed the configuration of the project as townhomes versus condominiums. And this is a proposed side plan that was revised again, that's in your packet tonight, where they remade some reductions in the number of units and in attempt to address the parking requirement. Since that time, when it came before the last meeting, when it was continued, they have submitted another revised plan that further attempts to meet the 4.5 parking space requirement for single-family residential, and that plan is currently under review by staff, by the DRC. And the applicant is here tonight and can explain their plans for moving this project forward. This plan is still consistent with a growth management strategic plan goal, and at our last meetings, staff continues to recommend approval of this project. If the council decides to move forward with 3.94 parking spaces, staff would still support that recommendation. However, if staff proceeds to, wants to move forward with the 4.5 parking spaces, you are obviously entitled to make that recommendation as well. And again, this is the first reading of this item, so there's an opportunity to come back with a revised plan. And planning commission also recommend approval of the plan as was presented, and I ask that council recommend approval on first reading.
Does the applicant here would like to speak to this?
Good evening. Fred Miller, Taylor Morrison Homes, 431 North Summerlin, Orlando, Florida. I was going to start off the presentation tonight by, you know, walking back the history of the project, but obviously county staff, city staff has done an adequate job, excellent job, walking back the history of, of the overall entitlements that the actual property maintained when it was originally planned. Staff also walked through the history of this iteration of the, of our development program. And I just wanted to, you know, rather than continue to speak about how we started at 208, went down to 198, down to 186, down to 182, and now down to 176, I'd rather focus on the effort that at least myself has made reaching out to the community, to the school board, to council, trying to, trying to solve all problems and be everything to everyone. And, you know, I'm at the point in the process where I'm not going to be everything to everyone. But what I would hope that council has seen is the willingness for Taylor Morrison to be a partner with St. Cloud. We are going to be building homes in this Orlando MSA. We hope to be building homes in St. Cloud. We want to be a good partner. And so, in the, in listening to the community and council, we've eroded the plan down. Plan maybe still has some changes, and we're obviously willing to continue to look at that. Due to submission timeframe, that plan was not in front of you, so the 3.94 plan that is actually on the agenda, you know, to continue to address the parking issue with the city as well as the community, we are completely all on board with our 4.5 plan, which whittles it down to a 4.534 in the parking ratio. I have copies of the plan, if there's any value in passing it to members if you haven't seen it. We don't need to. All I'm asking for tonight is for the ability to get through the first reading, to have the plan reviewed by DRC. I should note that all the previous submissions, staff had no comments, and we got their approval. I completely expect a plan that just increases the parking ratio and decreases the units to still gain that approval. And so, what I'm asking tonight is an approval subject to it moving through DRC, that we would then come back at our second hearing and adjust, address any other concerns that the community have, but at least continue through my first reading. And with that, I'll answer any questions that council or anybody else has.
Thank you. If you'll hold on just a minute, is anyone in the audience like to speak to this item? If not, we'll have discussion under a motion by council. Councilmember Askew?
For the record, I had a chance to meet with Fred and the Taylor Morrison team that they had there. Really, my concern was the parking, the 4.5 parking spots, and I saw the new drawings that's in there. I, I really don't have a problem moving it forward as long as that, that 4.5 parking spot stays in there.
Councilmember Matheny?
Thank you. I also had a meeting about this project with Ms. Thacker to kind of discuss what was going on, and some of the comments that I made in that meeting, and I made them in the last reading, even though we didn't vote on it, was I would really like to see a rear-loaded product, just because I think it looks nicer, and we don't have the sea of parking. I don't know what the new plan looks like in this version, if it's the one I saw last, or I don't know, but there was a huge parking area over by the school, and I just think the school, all the school parents are going to park in there, and the people who live in the community aren't going to park over there. Nobody walks. I live in a neighborhood that has a few, like, and it's a tiny neighborhood, like 50 homes, and there's a few scattered, like, extra parking. No one uses it, and it's like 40 steps that way, you know? So, no one, in my mind, no one's going to walk all the way from this big giant surface lot over to the far side of the community. I just don't think that's the best plan. I think it needs to be blended in with the homes and make it, like, convenient to the homes. And the other, the other thing I would like to see is, you know, when you go into the other phases of Anthem Park, they have really nice parks and open space and trails and interconnects and that, and this just doesn't have it for me. Like, I know, I know you guys have been trying hard and making concessions and doing things, but I still have reservations, and, you know, we've been stating, I've been stating, I know Mr. Askew has 4.5 since the get-go. I'm not sure, are we at 3.94 with the latest plan? Where, I don't, I don't know where we are, like, I heard so many numbers.
4.34.
4.34.
Excuse me, 4.534 is the new plan, and I have one commissioner, if you want to see it.
So, those are just my comments about, you know, I'd like to see the parking integrated. I think the, I know I was told that Taylor Morrison doesn't have a rear-load product. I don't know how hard it is, maybe Mr. Trace can comment on that, to build, to get a rear-load product. I mean, it doesn't seem like it would be that difficult, but.
You had fun finding an architect, right, for your house and all the design and everything?
I'm not, I'm not a big developer.
Councilmember Trace?
Oh, I, we're, we're done?
I'm done.
Okay. So, I still had the questions about buffers, trash collection, and then the school access and all that. We went through it ad nauseam at other meetings, but I don't think it's on the, on the record for this meeting, so I just had questions about, the buffer's long Lexington, there's, there's some nice berms, you know, granted, they've been there 20 years since this community- Granted, they've been there 20 years since this community kind of started. I just want to make sure wherever gaps there are, those are filled in.
Yes, we're planning along Lexington. We have a landscaping berm, believe it's three feet in height that we have planned for enhanced landscaping on top of that. So we have an elevation that we could, I mean, I could throw up there and show.
There was some stuff in the backup.
There is, there should be an elevation, something to that effect, that will give you some view shed and line of sight.
Well, if you're showing it, you gotta give it to me. Trash collection as well. It looks like, based on the plan I'm looking at, that as the 3.9 or whatever. It looks like there's good circulation for trash collection to happen, but I just want to make sure that was discussed. Is it going to be bulk collection or...
Bulk.
Okay, it will be bulk.
Then you'll see it noted on the plan.
Okay.
And then I'd like to just, I didn't state it earlier in my opening comments, but obviously with us working with the community and the school board, we are going to be funding the design of the circulation, the new circulation plan for the school board to solve the stacking issue that councilmember Matheny's obviously brought up. On the plan that you haven't seen, it's not socialized, but we, I mean, it's been submitted, but it's not on the, we've tacked, we put the parking over there because we felt that regardless, and I understand, creating a surface of asphalt, but that seemed to be the direction that we were getting, and we were running out of where we can put the parking. And so it made logical and reasonable sense to tuck it over against the western boundary where, because again, meeting with the school board, the issue with the stacking is going to be they can't open the gates until seven, period. I mean, that's state law. So we always understood that there possibly could be a risk of cut through. We felt that putting adequate parking over near the school as a compromise wasn't asking for people to park there, but it provided some additional solutions for a problem that I can't solve all by myself. I'm trying to, but I can't solve it all by myself. So with that, I just wanted to make record that we are working with the school board to fix that problem for the community.
And then on your comment about alley-loaded versus front-loaded, I know we have the issue in some communities that have the alleys of who maintains it. Is that a city road? Is that a homeowners association maintained road? Does trash collection come down there? So that's some of the stuff that we have to talk through. And I believe county's code, anything less than a certain size has to be alley-loaded. So that's one of those differences that hopefully, that coordination meeting that we have, August, July, August, something like that, scheduled with the county, we can help blend the gap between our code and their code to at least have it cohesive or at least have the standard change to make that a possibility. But right now, I don't like moving the goalpost on people. If this is allowed by code, then it is what it is on the home product side. On the parking side, all along, I've been fine with three and a half. I think there was a parking study, it wasn't in this backup, I think it was in the earlier stuff, it was like 2.2 was the max of any of the other townhome communities in this area. I know my parents live in Anthem Park, and they were talking about this and saying that, it's a shame they have all this less parking, but we walked around at night through their area, they live in a townhome, and barely anyone actually has more than two cars. They went down to one car. So it's just, it's one of those of, it's one of those issues that you have when the garage is full of stuff and you have the driveway, no one wants to park behind the garage for the driveway, and you have the car shuffle and then, so we might just need to look at guest parking of a higher requirement than just having four and a half because apartments have, is it two, one and a half, two, two and a half? So you have this big disparity between apartments and single-family. And townhomes should, in my mind, fall in the middle instead of four and a half because it just becomes a sea of parking, and it's not pretty. You just get long-term cars parked there and some of those off-street parking lots essentially that they are. So it's not, I don't think it's really solving anything. So I'm fine if you guys are fine with the four and a half parking spots and that meets code, then if everyone feels the same way, I'm fine with it. Seems like you guys have done a good job. The buffer was a big thing for me, trash collection, and then that making sure there is safe access for parents and parents dropping off and picking up, school buses getting in and out for the school. So I'm fine with that application.
Councilmember Matheny.
Thank you. I disagree with councilmember Trace about the parking in Anthem because I've walked around in Anthem, and there is a section in the middle that has great, no one's on the street. And then there's this, I think it's the south end when everybody's on the street.
And that's all the single-family areas that have the issue, not the townhomes, though. So that's the difference.
Well, I disagree with the parking. And then I thought I was told that the units along Lexington were going to face Lexington.
Now, that would be required for, I mean, that would be a rear load. I mean, you'd have to have a ribbing or some sort of furniture.
Okay, I thought that's what I was told when I had my meeting, that they were going to, because I was saying when you drove inside of the community, then you're going to be looking at the rear of them. And they had said, councilmember Trace had requested that. Is that not the case?
I wanted to make sure the berm happened, because they'd just be facing a berm anyway.
Right, that's what I was going to say, because this graphic doesn't match. So, okay.
Any other discussion? Well, we certainly appreciate the way you've worked with our council and our city, and I'm certainly willing to support this first reading as you take into consideration all the things and the concerns that we've had. Could I entertain a motion for the approval of ordinance 2021-04?
Motion to approve, but I believe it still has to go through DRC. We're waiting on DRC's approval.
And then as long as, when it comes back, in that approval somewhere it shows the funding for that new school stacking is in, I know you're representing it, but I just want to make sure it makes it into the documents.
I'll throw that in there.
Is that a second, Mr. Trace?
Do I have a second, Mr. Trace?
Sure.
Madam Clerk?
Deputy Mayor Trace?
Aye.
Councilmember Matheny?
No.
Councilmember Cooper? Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries 3-1.
Thank you, sir. Brings us to items four, five, and six.
First reading and introduction for ordinance number 2021-13, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, to annex into the City of St. Cloud approximately 13.57 acres identified as Center Lake Ranch Park Parcel located east of 12 Oaks Road and south of Handsome Road in accordance with the voluntary annexation provision of Chapter 171.044 Florida statutes. First reading and introduction for ordinance number 2021-14, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, assigning a future land use designation of mixed use to approximately 13.57 acres identified as Center Lake Ranch Park Parcel located east of 12 Oaks Road and south of Handsome Road, providing for amending the official future land use map of the comprehensive plan, filing of the Planning Commission recommendation and proof of publication, applicability, and effective severability, copies on file, and effective date. First reading and introduction for ordinance number 21, sorry, 2021-15, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, assigning a zoning district of mixed use compatible with a mixed-use future land use designation change adopted by ordinance number 2021-14 for approximately 1357 acres identified as Center Lake Ranch Park Parcel located east of 12 Oaks Road and south of Handsome Road, providing for entering the designation on official zoning map, filing of the Planning Commission recommendation and proof of publication, severability, and effective date.
Again, Andre Anderson, Community Development Director. This is the first reading for the Center Lake Ranch Park Parcel, which is to add 13.57 acres to the existing approved Center Lake Ranch project. This prop, the ordinance for this is 2021-13. We have received the petition from the property owner involved in this property, and it meets the criteria for Section 171.044 Florida statutes, that it is contiguous and reasonably compact. It's adjacent to the city limit, that it busts the city limits on the north, south, and western property boundaries. The existing land use is low-density residential in the county, and the existing zoning is AC agricultural development and conservation in the county as well. It is compatible with this surrounding area, and there are no adverse impacts to city facilities at this time. It's consistent with our strategic goal for growth management. And DRC and staff at our meeting in February recommended approval of ordinance 2021-13, and the Planning Commission at their meeting in April also recommended approval of ordinance 2021-13, and asked that the City Council approve this item based on the 16 findings of the Land Development Code. Moving on to the corresponding large-scale comprehensive plan amendment for this parcel, the future land use of this parcel is low-density residential in the county, and the future land use would be proposed to be mixed use in the city, again, compatible with the surrounding area and no adverse impacts to city facilities at this time. Again, it's consistent with our growth management strategic plan goal. And DRC and staff at our meeting in February recommended approval of ordinance 2021-14, and the Planning Commission at their meeting in April recommended approval of ordinance 2021-14. And we ask that the City Council also recommend approval based on the 16 findings in the Land Development Code. The final component of this item tonight is the associated zoning of the property, which would be from AC agriculture in the county to mixed use in the city. Again, the future land use is low-density, which is consistent with this land use zoning, moving to mixed use. Again, compatible with the surrounding area and no adverse impacts, and it also is consistent with our growth management strategic plan goal. DRC and staff at our meeting in February recommended approval of ordinance 2021-15, I'm sorry, and recommended approval of, the Planning Commission recommended approval of ordinance 2021-15, and again, asked that the City Council recommend approval of ordinance 2021-15 based on the 16 findings in Land Development Code. Of note, there's a fourth component, but it's not being heard tonight. It will be heard at the final adoption hearing of these items, and that is the actual amendment to the mixed-use concept plan to add this parcel to that plan. And if there are any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Is the applicant here?
Yes.
Jo Thacker, 17, South Orlando Avenue, Kissimmee, 34741. I'm here tonight to talk to you about the annexation as well as the future land use map amendment and the zoning. This is another piece that was not owned by the Center Lake folks who are here tonight. The developer is here tonight, as well as Kathy Hadaway from Polis and Bennett, to help answer any questions. Once they obtained ownership of the parcel, they wanted to bring it in, and it will be the new Central Park. That way, the development of the park area can happen a lot faster because it's closer in to where the development will happen instead of waiting until development gets to the parcel that was previously planned for the park. The other thing that I would like to say is that it will be a park and a fire station. So that way, the connection to the ranch property, it's a lot closer to that as well. There will be at least a sidewalk and most likely a trail that connects this park to the ranch that the city owns. So it makes for a nice location for this amenity, and like I said, it can happen a lot faster. Betty Damke has been coming to the meetings that we continued, and she couldn't be here tonight. So she asked me to let you all know what her questions were, and I have submitted her statement for the record. But she did indicate she's not objecting to the annexation, but she does have a concern as far as why it's called mixed-use zoning and not something else. And the reason that you want to have the mixed-use zoning is to be compatible with the rest of the approval of Center Lake. There is an obligation within the plan that's approved by the city to have open space, and so this needs to count as part of that. With this, your open space requirements are being improved. There'll be more open space than what you presently have approved. The other questions that she had related to the fire station, who would be responsible for building it, and it would be an obligation of the city, and we did let her know, we didn't know when it would be built by the city. And another question that she's going to bring up to you all at some point is whether that city location for the fire station could serve other surrounding county parcels. So just wanted to put on the record what her questions were, so you all could see that. What I'd like to do is reserve time to address any questions that may come up from the public. As to this passive park, it is a passive park and a fire station, so the impact on the surrounding property owners, which many of the, most of it is Center Lake, but there are, there's a vacant lot next to it. But the impact of what it could be now is low-density residential. There would not be residential on it, it would be a park and a fire station. So I, hopefully, that is a less impact of what the possibility of it being developed in its present entitlements. So I would be happy to answer any questions you have, but then would like to reserve time to address the public comment.
Thank you. We'll hear from anyone in the audience that would like to make a statement or ask a question. Sandy Simons?
Hello again. Sandy Simone, 5465 Handsome Road, St. Cloud, 34771. Oh, is the time clock due? I never noticed that before. I'll talk really fast. So here are my questions. Can you pull up the concept map of the park? I'd like it to go in the record because I am on the same page as Betty that I would like the concept map of where the park is to go into the permanent record. I agree with Betty that I'd like to see some, we'd like to request a special restriction, whatever the verbiage is, that it's always a park. I don't want it to be like split oak where it changes in a few years and becomes whatever. So we're requesting that there's something in there that says this will be a park. That's the other reason we're asking for the concept map to go into the paperwork, so we know where the park is and where the fire station is. We're fine with the annexation, that's not a problem. Two of my neighbors, Jewel and Paul, wanted to know about the turtle relocation when they start working on the fire station. At what timeframe do they start relocating the gopher tortoises that are there? And my main question is, and it can just be a simple yes or no question, I want to ensure, again, as I did last year, that this development is following the Narcisi guidelines. We spent four years in Osceola County working on the Narcisi guidelines. The City of St. Cloud adopted the Narcisi guidelines, and I appreciate Jesse's emails back to me, but I'm a layperson, I'm okay with yes or no. Not the whole paragraph of what they are and the land elevation, because it was up to me, we'd have berming all the way around it, but that's not in the Narcusi overlay. So that's kind of my questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So Ms. Thacker, would you like to speak to any of those items?
So the developer has made a commitment that there will not be any residential or commercial on the property.
Thank you. Do you know anything about the turtle relocation?
I don't, but turtles have to be mitigated. If one is found there at the time of development, it would be handled by the regular mitigation process. And I think on the Narcusi overlay, I think staff has addressed that.
Yes.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak to these items? Yes, sir.
He's going to answer the turtle question.
Fred Miller, Taylor Morrison, 431 North Summerlin. Typically, you have to have your stamped construction plans, and then it's about a 90-day lead time to go ahead and get the turtle permit process, and then anywhere from 30 days to relocate them, depending on the weather. If it gets below a certain temperature, you can't relocate them.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak to these items? If not, we'll have discussion under motion by council.
I have a question.
Go ahead. Councilmember Matheny?
Ms. Simone had asked for the map of the park to be put into the record. Can we put that up on the screen? Can we put that up on the screen?
That map is not available tonight because that was not the topic of discussion for the concept plan, and as I mentioned, that is the fourth item that will be coming forward to actually show the concept plan that shows a change. Tonight, we're doing the annexation, land use and zoning, so we did not have any exhibits as part of our presentation.
So the short answer to that is when the fourth item comes back, we'll make sure that the park is in there at that point, and the council will approve that, which means it can't be changed at any time without having to come back to the council or a future council.
Thank you, that'd be helpful.
I'll make a motion to approve, and I'd like to add the verbiage in there that, and I know Ms. Thacker is saying that they've made the commitment, but to put in the approval that this will always remain a park, this parcel will always remain as a park.
Fire station.
And fire station. It won't be developed with anything else.
I think what they, their commitment was not, it wouldn't be a, not, say it again?
The only problem when you say park and fire station, that means like the roads and things like that. That's why I was saying it won't be residential or commercial because of right-of-way and other things that could be part of a park or a fire station.
Can we say associated appurtenances?
Why don't we do it this way? Let us work on some language. We can work with the applicant. This is first reading.
Okay.
Where everybody's clear what the intent is.
Right.
Instead of putting some language into a motion that we can't do, and then we can work something out.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to approve with the city attorney following up at the next reading to have language in place that keeps it a park and a fire station with whatever legalese you need in there. That's my motion.
Second. We have a motion for Councilmember Matheny, a second, from Councilmember Trace, and we'd like to speak.
Yep.
Councilmember Askew, you made a second.
Yeah, he made a second. So I did meet with Mr. Crusoe, and then I did meet with Ms. Simone and Ms. Demke after the meeting, last meeting. We chatted about this a little bit. And I'm fine with this. I wanted the concept plan added in as well, and I figured with the delay it would meet up because we continue this like eight times. So yeah, as long as it's not, as long as it's a park space, I'm good with the application. And then on the fire station, there was a question about timing of it. Do we know timing-wise when this new station will be built? Oh, yeah.
Do you have a timeline, chief? I don't think, while he's walking up, mayor, could I address the question?
Yes, sir, I was fixing.
Yes, sir, I'll let the chief answer the timeline. We're still doing some analysis on that. But as far as when the station is constructed, we work very closely with our county through both automatic aid and mutual aid. It would continue to serve that area, whether it's county or city, and there would be a transition, but if we did annex that area, if you approve, then we would be covering it from that fire station. So, chief?
Good evening, Jason Miller, fire chief. As far as when the station construction, that'll be based on the call volume in the area as far as the fire rescue element, the adopted level of service that the council provided for that area. As you know, it's about 500 calls a year requirement for that area to be designated for a fire station needed area. So as it gets developed, we obviously expect that area to grow and calls for service to come in, so we'll be monitoring those on a semi-annual basis. And once we hit that trigger point, we'll get with you all and get some funding to get a fire station opened up out there.
Okay, and is, I know we're not looking at the concept plan, but is the new location?
I like it a whole lot better than the old location.
Perfect, good.
And Andre, this doesn't go back to the August 12th meeting, right?
Right.
I just want to make sure everybody's aware of that. So you won't see this at your next two council meetings, it won't be till August 12th that this comes back.
Ms. America, can I just ask for clarification? There was a motion made with these conditions. Is this for the annexation? It just wasn't clear.
It was just for the first item.
Okay, so I just wanted to make sure that that's what we're voting on.
Okay.
Ordinance 2020-13.
Yes. Can we have a motion and a second regarding 2021-13 with the additions from Councilmember Matheny? Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Cooper? Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Council, Deputy Mayor Trace?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries 4-0.
Can we have a motion and our discussion regarding ordinance number 2021-14?
So moved.
We have a motion from Councilmember Matheny, a second.
Second.
Councilmember Askew. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Cooper? Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Trace?
Aye.
Councilmember Matheny?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries 4-0.
And could I have a motion regarding ordinance number 2021-15?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Matheny, a second, from Councilmember Askew, Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Trace?
Aye.
Councilmember Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Cooper? Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries 4-0.
Brings us to item number seven. Madam Clerk?
First reading and introduction for ordinance number 2021-17, an ordinance of the city council of the city of St. Cloud, Florida, amending the land development code of the city of St. Cloud, Florida to include Part II, City Code, Chapter 8, Animals, Article 2, Definitions, Article 3, Division 7, dash R, dash E, R, dash 1, R, dash 1A, and R, dash 1B. Single-family dwelling district, Article 3, Division 10, Table 3, dash 5, providing for separability, conflicts, codification, and an effective date.
Again, Andre Anderson, Community Development Director. This is a request to amend the land development code, to amend the residential estates zoning district, and essentially to address issues relating to agricultural uses within the city as a result of annexation. As you may recall, back in 2018, we, the city council established an ad hoc committee for agriculture related to some enclave annexations that were occurring at that time, and there were several concerns by these landowners that once annexed into the city, they would lose their ability to continue their livelihood if they had the agricultural benefit criteria. So one of the issues was that by rotating their animals from parts, portions of their property, they would lose their non-conforming status. As a result, we needed to look at how to address that and provide additional incentives for these landowners. In addition, we also want to look at how to address educational farming for like the 4-H club and also the Future Farmers of America. So the committee convened, and we met several times, and they came up with a series of recommendations regarding the residential estates district, which would limit ag uses based on the animal type, weight, and land area of the property. This table represents a summary of that proposal where it's permitted in RE for single-family detached and for general farming for personal use. And then there are different group class sizes. Small animals, birds, and fowl were permitted, and there were Group 1, which the weight was less than 40 pounds, chicken, rabbits, and fowl. And the minimum lot size would be one-half acre, and the maximum that they could have would be 20 ounces per acre. Then the next classification was the livestock grazing animals, and again, that was permitted use, and that was Group 2, where it was between 41 pounds up to 500 pounds. And this included sheep, goats, and other animals in that category. Again, the minimum lot size was half an acre, and the maximum there would be five animals per acre. And then Group 3 was anything greater than 500 pounds. And included categories such as cattle, horse, donkeys, and mule. Then going further, there's also some additional animal classification or types that were also permitted. Swine, beekeeping, aviaries, community garden, commercial kennels, stables, and commercial use would be permitted, but it would be as a conditional use, which would give the city council the ability to impose conditions as needed. This proposal, again, was brought before the city council back in 2019, and they had a workshop, and the council gave direction to move forward. Unfortunately, what had happened was the staff person that was working on this item had subsequently left the city, and it kind of fell through the cracks, and that's on us. And so we are now bringing it forward for your consideration. DRC and staff recommends approval of ordinance 2021-17, and the planning commission at their meeting also recommended approval of ordinance 2021-17, and asks that you do the same.
Thank you. Would anyone in the audience like to speak to this item? I want to see some of those 40-pound chickens. Steroids, I don't think I want to eat any of them. Councilmember Matheny?
Thank you. Andre, can you go back a couple slides to when you said the different classification of animals? So Group 3 greater than 500 pounds, is that allowed on a half acre?
No, it's not, because based on the, how do I explain this? There is a minimum requirement for cattle of a certain size. So minimum five acres is across the board for all classifications, but it's based on the weight class, yes.
Point five acres? Well, I just, it just didn't say anything here, like the other two, Group 1 and Group 2.
We can definitely fix that, yeah.
Yeah. I can clarify that. Because I thought when we had seen it before, like in 2019, it had like, you had to have a couple acres or something to have.
In the backup, it says a minimum of two acres on the animals weighing over 500 pounds.
Okay, yeah.
And limit to one head per acre.
That's what I thought it had, it had like a acreage.
Yeah, this is kind of just a quick summary, just a snapshot, but yeah, there is more detail behind it.
And so when this came up, that I had asked that we create the kind of a council of folks that actually have farm animals to give us guidance, because I have no idea like what it takes to have, you know, sheep or goat or cattle. And so this matches the recommendations from that committee?
Word for word, yes.
And then, did they know this was on the agenda tonight?
I forgot to inform them.
So if before the second reading, I'd just like a letter or email or something from them that says that this all kind of matches what they were looking to have?
Absolutely. They, as you recall, they came to the workshops with the council and presented and were in full support. But yes, I'm happy to get them to send us something.
That'd be great. They don't have to come, they can just send an email or something.
They certainly need to look at these numbers to make sure that...
Well, these were their numbers.
Good.
Yes.
Councilmember Trace?
All right, so I brought this up during my briefing, but I kind of have a question of, we have an agricultural use, and then we have a RE use in the residential use table or non-agriculture and residential use table, but all the stuff that we're adding is only under RE and not under the agricultural one. So I didn't know, so if you have a commercial kennel, stable, or pet rescue existing when you get annexed and you have ag, that's not allowed use, you have to rezone to RE?
That is the intent.
Okay. And then what, are there any bona fide ag uses that you would, you guess, wouldn't be allowed to do anymore? Like, what would you lose out on? I don't want to force someone to rezone to RE and then they lose out on what they've been doing for the past 20 years on the property.
Can I?
Yeah, go for it.
Was this before you?
It might have been.
Yes.
Oh, so that's exactly what we were working on. So we, you know, at the time this came up about the annexations, I was contacted by several bona fide ag businesses, and so a lot of the things that we were doing was going to negatively impact them, like, I'm just going to quote this and sound like I know what I'm talking about, about cattle, but you have to rotate the cattle around on the different tracts of land. So they were like, for example, you know, in between their family, they owned a bunch of land, but they would circle it off of their lot, you know, let them graze over here, and then, you know, six months later, they'd move them to a different. So based on what we had in our documents, we would have basically, they would have lost the exemption. So that's why we asked to create, so we had like a guy who was like a large horse vet.
Large vet, animal vet.
Yeah, we had, and a couple different...
Couple of the White Brothers, they're the property owners, Furtick.
So that's what these recommendations are from, that, you know, those, the people that would actually be impacted, and so that's why I was just saying.
But there are permitted and conditional uses that don't transfer over if you went from ag to RE. So I just didn't know why that distinction on some of these.
Well, to...
Arboretums, airports, not that they would want, like animal farm, like there's a couple that don't go over to RE as well.
But they exist right now in the ag zoning district.
Yeah, which is a non-conforming zoning district.
But then those are not, those are not parcels that are being annexed. The concern was really with parcels that are being annexed in the city that have these ag benefit and losing that. And so we're saying if you're being annexed in the city, that you would change your zoning from ag, because when you're annexed in the city as an ag use in the county, you become non-conforming.
Yep.
But if you're an existing ag use, you continue, nothing has changed as far as that concerns.
All right, as long as we feel comfortable with that, I'm good with it.
Any other discussion? Could I entertain a motion? Motion to approve. We have a motion from Councilmember Askew. Do I have a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk?
Deputy Mayor Trace?
Aye.
Councilmember Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Cooper? Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries 4-0.
Brings us to item number eight.
First public hearing and introduction for ordinance number 2021-49, an ordinance of the city council of the city of St. Cloud, Florida, closing, vacating, and abandoning portions of a utility easement located east of Jones Road and south of Eagle Road, specifically described in the body of this ordinance, providing for separability, conflicts, and an effective date.
Andre Anderson, this is an abandonment of easement, it's first reading, and this is located in the Silver Springs subdivision that's in unincorporated Osceola County. They're requesting full abandonment of the easement. This went for DRC, and there are no objections. We contacted any utility that will be infected that will be affected, and all that utility commission is the only person, and they don't have a use for that easement, so they have no objections to abandoning this easement. This is an image of the easement that's being proposed to be abandoned. It's consistent with our infrastructure goal from our strategic plan, and we recommend approval of ordinance number 2021-49, and ask that the city council also approve ordinance 2029 based on Section 5.5.4(c) of the land development code.
Would anyone in the audience like to speak to this item? We'll have discussion and our motion by council. Councilmember Trace, your line is on.
Oh, sorry.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion for Councilmember Matheny?
Second.
Second from Councilmember Askew, Trace. Councilmember Trace is the second. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Cooper? Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Trace?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries 4-0.
Brings us to item number nine.
Public hearing for Resolution 2021-058R, a resolution of the city council of the city of St. Cloud, Florida, granting a conditional use to operate a school's private and parochial use of, on a 0.238 acres property located at 1400 Vermont Avenue, St. Cloud, Florida, as described in the body of this resolution.
Andre Anderson, Community Development Director. This is for a conditional use for a school on this 0.238 acre property. It's an existing home. The application indicated that this would be a somewhat of a one-on-one tutoring for high-achieving individuals, normally referred to as autistic persons, and so they wanted smaller group settings, and so the application indicates that they be one tutor per five students, and it would be less than 20 total. The zoning is R2, single-family, 2-family, and the future land use is medium-density residential. Again, it proposes for a school, private or parochial, it's essentially a tutoring center. It is compatible. They did submit letters to the property owners indicating their proposed use and received no objections. They received one request for additional information, and we learned that at the planning commission meeting that they were unable to contact that individual who requested additional information. This is consistent with our strategic goal for economic development, also for growth management, and staff recommends approval of ordinance 2021-058R. And the planning commission also recommends approval of 2021-058R, and asks that you do the same.
Is the applicant here?
Yes.
Would you like to speak? Please state your name and address for the record.
Annette Moore, 6375 Carroll Circle, St. Cloud, 34771. It's a very small family unit school. It's not a school-school. We only have 12 students at the moment. I... I think we could manage fifteen, but I wouldn't like to go above that. We teach autistic, special needs, sometimes super exceptional autism, but it's a very small environment. We've gotten very well with our neighbors, we've contacted them, talked to them, and as far as I'm aware, there's nobody said, no, we don't like you. Okay?
Thank you very much. Would anyone in the audience like to speak to this item? If not, we'll have discussion, questions, or motion by council.
Motion to approve ordinance 2021-058R.
We have a motion from Councilmember Trace.
Second.
Wait, just, and, second from Councilmember Askew. Councilmember Matheny, you have a comment?
Yeah, you know, going through the package, and it says that there's no impact to traffic, you know, and I talked to Mr. Anderson about that, like, you know, what is that based on? That's just the applicant saying that there's no impact to traffic? And, you know, this is a really busy road and a busy corner, right there by the CVS. I mean, I know it says it's small, and twelve to fifteen. I love the idea, the school sounds amazing, but I'm concerned about the traffic and dropping kids off and getting in and out, and where are they going to stop, and where are they going to park, and how are they going to do all that maneuvering and not impact the street? So, I mean, that's just my concern. I don't know, is no one else concerned about those issues with the traffic and parking and circulation and...
Would you like to speak to that?
Well, we're on Fourteenth as well, and we're using the door on Fourteenth, not the door on Vermont. Vermont door would be our fire escape slash handicap access. At the moment, we don't have any wheelchair children, but we've used Fourteenth, and we've had no problems. We did have a small celebration for our two graduates that graduated in the garden, because there's a big field, and we did vertical parking on the edge of the field, and it didn't impact anything at all. Though, I don't know, there were about eight families, maybe ten vehicles, because there were some graduates with aunties and grandparents, but there was no problem with parking, just the way we're working it out.
So, do you have hours of, I mean, like, do all the kids come at one time?
No, no. We have a staggered start and a staggered exit, just because it is small family and because we want to talk to the parents and make sure the children are handed out. The parents park, it's not a long line. It's just park up, come and get your child, and then go back out. And most of our parents have seen the flow of traffic and said, it's so much easier to go back to Tennessee if they're going towards Kissimmee, but if they're going back into town, they go back up Dakota. And it doesn't mean that they have to cross Vermont, which is a busy road, but no, we don't have any problems with that. We've talked with our parents, and everybody seems very comfortable.
So, you're operating this school right now, in this location?
Oh, no, no, no. We just had that, we've had a open house where we've had parents come in and have a walk-through and see it. We've shown them the parking that we envision individually, just to show them, because, you know, when you're putting people into a new building, you want them to see it before you do anything with it. And so, we had them come out and look at it before we even started all of this.
I'm concerned about the parking and circulation and traffic. I just, so, Mr. Anderson, when we talked about it in my agenda review, so, there's another step beyond this, where they were going to have to provide a site development plan and parking and circulation, and we can ask for a traffic study?
I thought I'd already done that.
I don't know, let me answer the question. So, to answer your question, the next step in the process, this is to approve the use on the property. The next step is to do a change of use, because they're changing use to a school, and at that time, we would verify and ensure that there are no adverse impacts, specifically traffic circulation, parking, and so on. They also have to meet building code requirements as well, you know, for building occupancy and so on, so there's still more steps beyond this. And if you wanted, and again, since this is a conditional use, you have the ability to impose whatever conditions you deem appropriate, since we deal with each item individually.
Does the change of use come back to us?
Not the change of use.
Does anything come back to us, or this is it?
Well, this is the...
No, there really wouldn't be anything that would come back to us, I don't think.
But this is the first public hearing. There's a...
No, this is a conditional use, so this is the...
Number nine.
Yeah, this is the only, it's a resolution, so this is the only public hearing on it. Whether, I don't believe the final, the change of use he's talking about is a change from the current use to the school, which is an administrative staff process. The fire department gets involved, and everybody looks at that as the new use. So, I do not believe there'd be any plan. Now, if you want to see some sort of traffic plan, or you want, or you'd like, as Andre mentioned, this is a conditional use permit, and you can't put site-specific conditions on it. If he'd like to see a traffic plan, we certainly can bring that back to you, or you can put a condition that we have seen in some of these before, that if traffic does become an issue and a problem, that the conditional use permit would come back in front of the City Council to work on an alternative solution, or possible for revocation of the conditional use permit.
I just think the likelihood of revoking it once you issue it is slim to none.
Don't disagree, but that's... But this would be the final approval, this would give them the permit to basically move forward and go through the staff review process.
Councilmember Trace?
So, how about this, because I know there's a number of driveways and houses that only have access out to Vermont, you know, kind of in that stretch between Thirteenth and Seventeenth, and I could see that being kind of hairy. How about adding a condition that it only has vehicular access off of Fourteenth Street, so they can't try to have a driveway or some sort of connection, or pull-through, drop-off, whatever, that comes out onto Vermont? I don't think it'd meet the engineering code anyway, but at least it limits that to, really, the only in and out is off Fourteenth Street. Because the CVS has access off Vermont, a full, yeah, full intersection right there, closer to 192, and there's not really an issue. If that turn lane, that left turn lane, northbound, gets backed up, people just kind of come, figure out another way to get out, and that's a CVS, not a...
I know, schools are a special, special thing, though. So, I like that as a condition. I also would want, as a condition, that a traffic study is done to show that there's no impact to the traffic circulation, and I guess that's to be reviewed by staff. And that, to put in there that it is a staggered start and stop times.
Staggered start and pickup, you mean?
That's what she had said, yeah.
Yes, it's staggered start and pickup.
That it has to remain staggered, so that there's no impact to traffic.
I just figured, if it's a twenty-student max, that'll alleviate it, because even if you had twenty trying to pick up and drop off at the same time, it's...
That's a lot, twenty cars, like, piled up on the side roads and blocking, I mean, that's a lot. So, I mean, that's, that's my friendly amendment to your motion. I guess somebody has to accept that, right?
I think that TIA, I don't even know what that would show, it would just show that there's a maximum number of students. I don't, I'm fine, as long as the access is only off Fourteenth Street, that's what all amend the motion for.
So, you're not, no staggered start and stop?
It's going to happen anyway. You can only fit so many students in that size of a building, anyway.
Councilmember Askew?
Maybe to help, I have a daycare near my house, and they pretty much have a stagger-stop kind of thing, but they're little kids, so I would assume she wouldn't want to get herself into any trouble by, next thing, they got twenty cars piled up outside her house, and it is a conditional use, so...
We can still revoke it, right?
That's true, Mr. Manzares, we could revoke this if...
Can at any time?
Okay. As long as she understands that, I think that's, she feel that's important to us.
I'm certainly amenable to, certainly what you're doing is a worthy cause, trying to minister to special needs children, and I certainly think that there's something about a home-type environment that would certainly make that more conducive. However, I do share the same concerns. If you get up to a capacity of twenty kids and twenty cars coming, you know, I know you're saying no, shaking your head, but, you know, you may have twelve, but then, are you going to turn away, you know, eight kids if they, if they come? So, you just need to understand it's a conditional use, and if parking becomes a problem, it will be revoked. Okay? With that understanding, I'd be willing to support that. Okay. Are you adding a caveat to your...
I'm adding the access off Fourteenth only, and then, if you want to make a competing motion, that's fine. But I just, I think adding the traffic impact analysis, another five or ten thousand dollars of something, that's, I don't think it'd prove anything one way or the other.
Right.
What about the parking piece?
Oh.
The staggered, he said no to that. It doesn't sound like anybody else is going to do it.
Okay. Well, I just want to make sure, if the council's intention that parking becomes an issue, and that that would be a reason to revoke the conditional use permit, I'd like to see that in the conditional use permit, specifically in that language. That's a little different than the staggered timing you were talking about, that's just a parking issue.
I would put in notice if there's issues that arise, it should already say it on the conditional use anyway, but this can be revoked at any time for issues that arise with regards to parking specifically.
Okay.
Okay. It may not be an issue now, but I promise you, when it, if it becomes an issue, they'll be calling us, so. So, we have a motion with the Fourteenth Street addition. Madam Clerk, you call the roll.
Councilmember Cooper. Councilmember Askew.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Trace.
Aye.
Councilmember Matheny.
No.
Mayor Blackwell.
Aye.
Motion passes three one.
Item number ten has been pulled. Brings us to council action. Item number one has been withdrawn, brings us to item number two. Madam Clerk?
Resolution number 2021-105R, a resolution of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, approving a water and wastewater service agreement from Big Sky Land LLC for a residential development in a mural property located in the unincorporated area of Osceola County, on the north side of Big Sky Boulevard, south of Horton Road, east of Simmons Road, and west of Cinder Lane, authorizing the city manager to execute the agreement and providing an effective date.
Marjorie Craig, Environmental Utilities Director, as you, as she just mentioned, it's a water and wastewater agreement. You can see the property is just north of Big Sky, and it's bounded by 192 and the Turnpike and the canal. It's ninety-five, a little over ninety-five acres, with three hundred and thirty-two residential units. You can see that the yellow part shows where the city boundaries are, so it's just outside the city limits, and because it is outside the city limits, it does need to be brought before council. The, there'll be water and wastewater, and then there'll be a separate reuse line extension agreement that we'll bring back later. So, this, these slides tell a little bit about the development itself. The garage setbacks will be a minimum of twenty-five feet. Each single-family residence will have four and a half parking spaces, minimum of two in the garage or in the driveway, or the HOA documents will contain language prohibiting on-street parking. And each single-family residence will be a minimum of fifteen hundred square feet of air-conditioned living space, excluding the garage, and will receive the recorded declaration of deeds, covenants, and restrictions for review prior to issuing any certificate of capacity. Elevations that will vary from adjacent homes include self-regulating monotony clause, and paint color and elevation shall be adjacent across the street from each other, and then the air conditioner pads and condensing units will be installed with a minimum of ten feet stagger to provide for drainage, and a minimum of two trees per lot. So, staff recommendation that we, that you pass the water and wastewater agreement. We have capacity there, and we recommend approval.
Is the applicant here? Did I jump ahead of you? Ms. Craig, did I jump ahead of you, Ms. Craig? Okay, thank you.
Good evening, John Reich, Reich Properties, 10775 Narcousi Road, Orlando, here on behalf of the applicant, and here to answer any questions. We're in agreement with staff's conditions and the agreement.
Thank you, sir. Would anyone in the audience like to speak to this item? If not, we'll have discussion, questions, or motion by council.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion for Councilmember Matheny. Could I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilmember Askew. Madam Clerk?
Deputy, I mean, Councilmember Askew.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Trace.
Aye.
Councilmember Matheny.
Aye.
Councilmember Cooper. Mayor Blackwell.
Aye.
Motion carries four zero.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Brings us to item number three. Madam Clerk?
Resolution number 2021-116R, a resolution of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, providing for the approval and adoption of the local mitigation plan 2021, and providing for an effective date.
Good evening, City Council. Cameron Crandall, Environmental Utilities Deputy Director and member of the Local Mitigation Strategy Working Group for Osceola County. We're here today to ask the City Council to adopt the Osceola County 2020 Local Mitigation Strategy Plan. The objective of this plan is to make Osceola County and the community as a whole a safer, more safe, and more disaster resilient. The plan was put together by the Local Mitigation Strategy Working Group, which is a multi-jurisdictional group, including members from the City of St. Cloud, City of Kissimmee, Osceola County, members of the school board, non-for-profit agencies, private businesses, basically anyone we can get to come help us plan. The plan identifies and prioritizes mitigation goals and objectives, including mitigation initiatives based on the community hazard and the vulnerabilities. So, we're really looking at what the city and the county and the community has, and what kind of hazards we experience locally, and how to mitigate those problems. And then, also, we talk about, we want to make sure these mitigations are effective, feasible, and environmentally sound. So, included with the plan are several appendices, has our local mitigation strategy project list, it describes the Local Mitigation Strategy Working Group bylaws and membership, has other documentation, annual reports, includes a critical facilities map, has passed adoption resolutions, this was passed by the City of St., the previous plan was passed by the City of St. Cloud, it was adopted in 2016, and then it has our, the new 2020 Hazard Identification Risk Assessment. So, we're asking for approval, or the City Council to approve.
Is anyone in the audience that'd like to speak to this item? If not, we'll have discussion, questions, or motion by council.
So moved.
We have a motion, Councilmember Matheny, second by...
Second.
Councilmember Askew for the adoption of resolution number 2021-116R. Madam Clerk?
Deputy Mayor Trace.
Aye.
Councilmember Matheny.
Aye.
Councilmember Cooper. Councilmember Askew.
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell.
Aye.
Motion carries four zero.
Thank you. Thank you for all your work on that, by the way, Crandall. Item four has already been approved, item number five, discussion, please.
Discussion and possible action regarding the purchase of an ice-pigging truck.
Councilmember, Councilmember?
No, sir.
City manager, sturgeon.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to push this, the next meeting, Mr. Cooper is not here, and I'd like to have him here for this discussion.
Okay. Are we in agreement?
Sure.
To continue this at our next meeting?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Does that need a motion?
No, sir.
All right, we're in agreement for continuation. Brings us to item number six. Madam Clerk?
Discussion and possible action to authorize the city attorney to file suit for an abatement of a nuisance and foreclosure of code enforcement liens on property located at 825 Maryland Avenue.
And, Mr. Mayor, if I may, and I'm going to initiate this, and then the police chief is here also to address you on this topic. So, this is a property located at 825 Maryland Avenue, that city staff at several different levels has been working with and dealing with for several years. The police chief has information going back ten years on this property at this point. Your various parts of your, several of your departments have been involved in this, the police department, the fire department, and code enforcement. It's been an ongoing issue for the staff and the city and the neighbors. It's been an ongoing issue for this, for the staff and the city and the neighbors. The, unfortunately, we have tried every administrative avenue that the city has to try to work this, the owners of this property or help persuade the owners of the property, motivate them to, to do a better job taking care of their property and to, and to abate some of the behavior that's been going on, on the property. And unfortunately, it's been unsuccessful. There have been two code enforcement actions brought against this. Liens have accrued over, to over $50,000 on the property. There's a current fine accruing on the property of $200 a day. We are investigating and continue to investigate the ability to foreclose on those liens. However, we do not think that is a, that is a viable option because the property, the owners of the property actually live in the property, and under Florida's law, there's protection against what's referred to as homesteaded property. We're going to continue to look at that avenue, however, we do not think that is a viable option. With that being said, having hit somewhat of a wall on this, we, the code enforcement came to us, we've talked to the police department, I've had at least two conversations with one of the neighbors, and we have thought, we are working on an alternative method to try to address this. It's somewhat unusual, however, in the sense that the city hasn't done this very often. In my experience, I think this will be the fourth time that the city has, has to invoke this, this process. So what we're asking for today is to address the criminal activity and the ongoing code violations on the property that the city authorized our office to file a, a formal abatement action in the circuit court, which would actually, is actually a lawsuit that's filed against the property owners to request, to ask, ask a judge to issue a permanent injunction ordering them to stop the activities and the behavior that's on the property and to clean up the property for where it is. It is, again, it's unusual, and however, at this point, we think it's necessary. That's the process. I'm happy to answer any more questions about the process itself. It is a lawsuit. We need your authority of the city council to do that. With that, I turn it over to the police chief, and he can give you some of the history on the property, as he knows that which will all be part of the lawsuit that we file.
Thank you, Mr. Manzares. Mayor, council, Pete Gollan, Chief of Police, Public Safety Administrator. This particular location, to say is a train wreck is an understatement, and it has been a plague to the neighbors and to the community for some time. The original owners of this property are deceased. Their children have inherited it. It's occupied by a number of various residents that seem to come and go. Let me give you some statistics, and then I'll, I'll give you kind of some, an overview. Since 2001, the St. Cloud Police Department has responded there 375 times, the Fire Department 48 times, totaling 428 emergency personnel responding to this residence. In addition to that, I can go on and on and on to the number of issues that have gone on to this property, from abuse cases, drug cases, barking dogs, burglaries, code enforcement violations, disturbances, goes on and on. Their, their list is endless as far as the total number of responses there. A lot of drug activity, a lot of unsavory characters, a lot of property, a lot of code enforcement issues. In the code enforcement realm of this, we have been there for code violations, burglary, verbal disturbances, civil matters, batteries, suicide threats, keeping, failing to keep the peace, drugs, noise complaints, generator complaints, lack of running water. It goes on and on and on. Currently, the property does not have running water, and it's been, it's been cited multiple times in its use. The power is, is basically being provided inadvertently by a portable generator. Code enforcement calls for service in 2017 were 17, 2018 were 27, 2019 were 65, 2020, 143 calls by our, our code enforcement staff, and so far this year, 60. There's multiple problems with the property. It's littered in trash and debris, human, human waste, everything else has been part of, plagued this problem. And we have arrested, rearrested, cited, re-sighted, and the problem is, it, it sometimes lacks through the court systems because of the civil processes and the challenges with our current state attorney's office and some of the prosecution of some of these cases. And it's also been in front of our code enforcement magistrate multiple times. What Mr. Manzares is proposing is our ability to utilize the power of a particular judicial process, which allows us to then hold them accountable, and they would be in violation of a court order. In doing so, if they fail to live up to that, they would be subject to arrest potentially for violation of that court order and the judge's order in this case. This house is tied in with multiple other houses that we know of that are, that are, that we've been under current investigation. A lot of drug activity, a lot of unsavory characters coming and going, and it has been something that we have been enforcing and enforcing and enforcing. Unfortunately, because of legalities and the, and the homestead laws and whatnot, the, the liens pile up, and here we are. So I would highly recommend that we go forth with this abatement process, as Mr. Manzares has talked about.
Thank you, sir. I'm looking here at the audience, I imagine there's quite a few people that would like to speak to this item.
This is just a fraction of, of what we have on this particular residence, and to the, to the neighbors, we know, we've seen it, and this is really the only way we're going to get our hands around this problem over there. It's, it's a shame, because the original family was a lovely family years and years, but the parents passed away a number of years ago.
Would anyone in the audience, without everybody saying the same thing over and over and over, like to come and speak?
Do I have to say my name?
Yes, you do. You have to state your name and address for the record, please. Step up to the mic, please.
Okay. Laura Napier, 822 Carolina. The problem with the residence isn't that what happens on that property is just that property. It flows into all of our yards. I'm unfortunate enough to share property line with them, and, and I've been there for three years, and it's increasingly gotten worse between, and it's daily. And it's like, these people don't sleep. They're zombies. They just, they never sleep, cussing and drinking and the trash. The trash goes into all of our yards, and beyond that, needles, spoons, broken glass pipes. It, it's nonstop. They've broken onto my property and hidden stolen items. They've hidden drugs on my property. They have no respect for anybody. It, it's a nightmare. It's an absolute nightmare. And the rest of the neighbors, you know, it's, it's a good community. These people are horrible. They're absolutely horrible, and they're a danger to everybody. The people that come in and out, I don't know if they're crazy or if they've got some medical issue, I don't know what's wrong with them, but they, they're aggressive, they're incoherent, and we have small children in the area. We have decent people, and I know I am among, you know, everybody else want a normal life. And the smell, oh my gosh, the smell. You can smell them as soon as you walk outside your door. It's horrible.
We certainly understand, and I'm sure we don't understand your total frustration because we're not in your shoes, but I'm sure, sure we are prepared to do everything that we can legally do to address your concerns. Sir, would you like to speak?
And Mayor, as individuals come up here, I, with respect there, I think everybody understands what's going on here. This is a public meeting, this is recorded information, so if you feel uncomfortable about providing your name or address, then I think the city council has enough information about what's going on there, and so I would just offer that out to you.
Okay.
Yeah, William Campbell, 816 Maryland Avenue. I live across the street from this house. I've even offered to purchase this house from the property owners and everything, and I guess they're getting by with whatever, or they're being able to stay there with, of course, all the stuff that law enforcement and everything like that's trying to do for them, code enforcement, and they just can't do anything about it. So if they feel it's a free place for them to live, in a sense, so, as the lady said, we have all kinds of problems with trash, transients and stuff like that coming from whatever. It's always somebody new every day like that. They've been in our yards sleeping, they've been in the middle of the road, passed out from drugs. Their debris winds up in our yards and everything like that. So we would definitely like to see you move forward with this, to try to do something to help us out. You wouldn't want this in your neighborhood, I'm sure, so we don't like it in ours either. So anything that you can do to move this forward, we surely would appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. I think that's definitely going to happen.
Hi. Samantha.
Step up to the mic, please, where you speak.
It's kind of tall for me. No, I'm just.
Pull it over there, you go.
Samantha said, I own 510 Maryland Avenue, and it is my first home that I've ever purchased, so I think that it's important for a young citizen to speak what I feel. So I've lived there for about four years now, and since this house has moved in, my car has been broken into and stolen. The cops have come to my house several times. They, a guy was in my yard, hiding from the police, and they got caught because I'm a big dog. My boyfriend's tires were slashed, and most importantly, I feel like I can't even go outside to take my trash out at night by myself, because I am in fear of my life and, and in fear that, because they are, they're argumental, so they will, that they have no shame to talk to you, to say what their mind is. You drive by, they cuss you out by just driving by. They're on their bikes, you're driving, they're going to come right out in front of you, God forbid you hit one of them. You know, it's just, it, it gets worse and worse as time goes on. Their yards are trash, the foot traffic that they have created has just been crazy. I, I would never want to live here if I knew that that was the house I was going to live there, and now for my first home, I don't want to create a family in it.
Thank you. We'll have discussion by council now. Councilmember Trace.
Thank you. Definitely drove by, definitely looks like this, this is an issue. Dan, can you walk us through the process of what happened? We, we filed this, we do that.
We're going to file, we've already prepared it. I need some more information from the police chief and the police department with regard to the criminal activity. I'm going to get ahold of his big book. And then, so, we will be filing, and we, we will do it fairly quickly, I would say, within the next five to seven days. We will file a complaint in circuit court for basically an injunctive relief for the criminal activity and also related to the nuisance that's created by the, all the materials that you saw when you drove by. Hopefully, we'll be, we're going to ask for an immediate injunction. It will depend on whether the owners of the property respond once we get the, once we serve them with it, about how, how quickly. Unfortunately, I can't give you any timeframe on the way the court system is working these days, and it's been backlog for two years now due, due to the COVID pandemic, and, but we will push, we will push this. Since we're asking for an immediate injunction, we usually can get those fairly quickly, and by that, and I know this sounds like a long time, but fairly quickly in the court system is 45 to 60 days. That would be a really fast time, time to be able to do it. So hopefully, we can do that and get an order from a court that gets an injunction. We would then serve the injunction on the property owners if they don't participate in a hearing, and then if they violate the injunction, we'll be back in front of the court, asking them the court for warrant or hold them in contempt, and then ultimately for, to turn it over to the police for, you know, arrest for violating a court order. But we're hoping it gets their attention. It's, it's, by no means is it a guarantee, but unfortunately, at this point, I think it's the only, it's one of the few options that are available now for the city to be able to do something about this without, of course, all what I'm talking about does not preclude the police department continuing to do what they're doing. It's a separate issue, and they're going to continue to monitor the criminal activity, as well as code enforcement's going to continue to work with that on that side, too.
Okay. So, in all likelihood, they wouldn't accept a warrant? So I, we're talking six months before something actually gets?
Probably to that point, yes, sir.
Okay. And then, we did check that they, they do hold the, what's it called? Yeah, the deed and all that.
Well, that's part of, part of, part of, you see, the item is to, is to also authorize pursuing on the foreclosure piece. We're going to do further checking on that. We actually had one, a case years ago here that we handled here in St. Cloud, where we started out thinking it was homestead, but during our further investigation, we found that it wasn't.
Okay. That's what I was looking for, homestead, yeah.
So, and we were able to be successful in that case, very similar case, and then, but we only found out that after we, after we went through the council and, and worked in it. So we're going to look at that avenue also.
Perfect. Thank you.
I would like to certainly make a motion that we file a formal abatement against the property and any other thing else that you can legally do, and if there's, would it help if the mayor, on behalf of the city council, called the state attorney or contacted them directly? Would that have any impact at all?
I'm going to leave that, the police, that's more in the police chief's deal, you certainly...
That's been taken care of, and they know this is a priority, and to the residents, we will continue to enforce everything and every aspect of this as far as trying to make this, because been doing this a long time, and this is one of the worst examples of drug addiction, and that's what we're talking about here. We have a bunch of people that are heroin addicts, and we have some people that are methamphetamine addicts, and they just don't care. And the houses, we've seen other properties in town very similar, and they just don't care. It's not fair to the residents nor the citizens that live anywhere near the area to continue to deal with this. So if a criminal violation is observed, they're going to jail. If a code enforcement violation occurs, they're going to be cited. And in the meantime, we'll push this thing through quickly, but the injunction will have a, a very strong impact, I think, on our ability to, to put some teeth into this finally, because it's a revolving door, and the, the prospects now with the court systems with drug addictions is, is they're, they're not criminalizing, they're not getting jail time the way they should. And that's been one of our biggest plagues in our community, is that combating this very issue, so.
I'll second that. We have a second from Councilmember Askew. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Councilmember Cooper. Councilmember Askew.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Trace.
Aye.
Council, Councilmember Matheny.
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell.
Aye. And we are so sorry that you guys are having to deal with this issue. We will certainly keep it on the front burner to do whatever we can as a city and with the chief of police to try and resolve your, your issue. God bless you. I'm sorry, guys.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you so much. Chief Cullen, thank you.
Yes, sir, I'll allow that.
William Campbell, 816 Maryland. I see they got like a $57,000 in code enforcement. If that property was to be purchased in this meantime, would that property owner, the purchaser, have to pay for those fines?
If you can figure out a way to acquire that property, I'm sure we will work with the council.
Hopefully, this action will get them thinking a little bit, okay?
We, we believe, I will tell you, in years of experience doing this, change of ownership to a good quality owner is the best way to resolve this.
Thank you, thank you very much. Sorry to keep you waiting so long. If y'all could please move on out, please, as quickly as possible, thank you. Mr. Manzares, your own.
I do not have anything, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Mr. Sturgeon.
Yes, sir, I have an item I need to discuss with the council. At last meeting on May 27th, you approved resolution number 2021-113R on the consent agenda, and it was a task authorization for all right fence services for the 17th Street Ballfields. The cost was $84,778. Due to continuing price increases of steel, the vendor cannot honor the pricing that was approved by council and has proposed and, has submitted a new proposal in the amount of $101,23, an increase of $15,345. The vendor will honor this price until tomorrow. If we don't approve it, he anticipates another 7% increase in steel cost, and so that cost will continue to escalate. I'm asking that this be approved at $101,123 and requesting this be added to the agenda for a vote.
Remember, you have that process that you have to add an item to the agenda, so we need a vote to add it to the agenda and then a vote to discuss.
First of all, could I have a motion that we add this item to the agenda?
Motion to add it to the agenda.
I'll second that. Can we just have, we have to have a formal vote on that?
Yeah, you, unfortunately, yes.
Madam Clerk, you call the roll.
Councilmember Askew.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Trace.
Aye.
Councilmember Matheny.
Aye.
Councilmember Cooper.
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell.
Aye.
Motion carries 4-0.
Do we have any discussion or motions from?
If you'd like the procurement direct services director to address any questions you have.
So the action is to approve the request, just to get clarified what that is?
Motion to approve the request that the city manager has brought forth for the additional costs, and just as a side note, I just got an email at work today about this, just, you know, countywide, that there's problems with this, so.
And I'll make a second. Madam Clerk, you call the roll.
Deputy Mayor Trace.
Aye.
Councilmember Matheny.
Aye.
Councilmember Cooper. Councilmember Askew.
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell.
Aye.
Motion carries 4-0.
I have nothing else, Mayor, thank you.
Councilmember Trace.
Thank you. I was looking through Vendor Link at some of the procurement items that we have out there, and we have the design for the public safety complex and the fire station design going out for architectural services, which is a good thing, it's things that we need. It kind of led me to think through, you know, usually when these projects come, go through design, go through permitting, go through construction, there's a lot of time that it takes staff to kind of work through that, you know, that workload of, you know, the design and all that. I didn't know if we wanted to bring into some of those scopes, having some, some sort of owner's rep. We can get scopes figured out, and I'm sure there's, there's plenty of them online, of just having an owner's representative kind of managing some of those projects, so we don't have to have staff tied up with it. I'm sure when the fire station design comes through, chief and, you know, his staff and, you know, the police stations likewise will have them looking through it, but then also just having that, that person there every day to make sure that architect's designing things right and, you know, to the standard that we want, and then also, when it, it's getting constructed, having someone there day in and day out to make sure it happens. Staff does a good job, and they have their day jobs that they have to handle, but then this would be kind of on top of it for some of those, those big ticket items. So I didn't know if that was something you guys wanted to look into.
So, so I would defer to the people whose items it are, it is, but my personal feeling is you can't hire a consultant to manage the project because they don't know what you want. You know, like, I deal with this all the time at work. We bring in consultants to design a road, well, they design a road, fine, but they just, I don't know, it's just like they don't know all the intricacies of everything that you need, so I don't know how helpful it is really to have it, but I would defer to the fire chief and, you know, if, if he thinks it's helpful. I just know it's difficult when it's an outside person, they don't know, you know, they'll make decisions that you have to, like, correct, because it's not kind of what you want.
Well, it's not something you have to answer right now, it just was bringing it up, if, if that's something that you guys want to look into. Oh, come on, no, 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 you have to answer now, then.
Mayor?
Yes?
Mayor, we've had some discussion among staff about, we have a lot of large-scale projects coming forward in the next several years, is to include in that price a project manager. Again, I agree with Mr. Trace, it's very difficult. I think that's what you're talking about, more of a project manager. It's like I said, it takes enormous amount of staff time to build a fire station, I know that personally. I can't imagine what a public safety complex do we have in triom here. I think staff is going to be stressed, so I'd like to have some more discussion with staff about that.
Or if it's internal staff that you have, someone that manages those big projects.
We have a project manager on staff, but I guess the person's going to be overwhelmed very quickly in the next year.
So I just want to bring it up as a, as a discussion item. And then, also, as we get more parochial schools, charter schools, do we want to have site-specific code for that, that they know when they're coming in and asking for a conditional use? Have the, have the transportation analysis done? We have specific code of how much parking they need per student, just, is that something that we should be forward with instead of us having to just kind of ad hoc, figure that out as we go? Because there's, in, you know, we have the new charter school that's just about to open over at Nolte and Canoe Creek, that it just popped up one day because it's allowed in that commercial use. I don't think we ever saw a site plan, I don't think we ever had time to chime in on it. Hopefully, it, it works and they've got enough flow, but is that something that we should have as code? I know we can't, we can't do things to limit public schools because they pretty much have veto power over anything, but on the private school side of things, we can definitely have them meet certain aspects of code if we think it's an issue, where stacking, school pickup, drop off, locational, is that something we should, would, should add to code?
Well, I think we should add on there that they can't be on main roads. I mean, that's the thing I've been saying, that nothing messes the traffic up more than a school.
Public or private, but we can't.
Yeah, just like the one that was going in on the east side of Stevens Plantation, I, I think that's going to be a disaster, but, you know, I would like some sighting standards so they wouldn't come in and get shot down up here.
Do you know if the county has any?
I know the county's been talking about the same thing, about not allowing them on, you know, major roadways.
Is that something we can talk to them about and?
Yeah. Add it to the agenda.
Well, I was going to ask Andre, the, the school element and the comp plan, isn't there, there's a sighting portion, portion of that, isn't there? Don't look at me, I'm the warrior, you're the planning guy.
Of course, it's the further.
What you're asking, Mr. Trace, is that those are issues that you really want staff to take a better look at and see how we can work them through the codes so you don't have the incidents. I would suggest to you that the item you heard tonight, it's a, that's a very, very unusual item, a school that's small in a, in an area like that, so that was, that was somewhat unusual, especially a school like that, not, not a, you know, a preschool daycare kind of facility, which some, those are typically what you see, but we're certainly got the message that this is someone.
I would like to see site-specific standards for those, those types of uses.
Mr. Sturgeon?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. That just jogged something in my, in my mind about the meeting coming up with joint meeting with Osceola Board of County Commissioners, is I have a request that each council member send me a discussion, so when I sit down with the county manager, we can come up on an agenda. Tendatively, we're looking at August 2nd, and we put that to rest today, I think. We just got to get a couple more calendars in line.
Could you just send us a reminder?
I will, I don't have any to do that, but I just want to see if we can start getting that list together.
Does it have to be private emails? I mean, or can we email you as a group, the topics we want to talk, because, you know, it might spur another thought. I mean, is that sunshine to topics for a workshop?
Workshop. We've got time.
What, what I think, since he's looking at August, my suggestion to you is that if you, if you can email the city manager's office, he can put them together, and then he can bring them back at your report, and then distribute a list of where everybody can talk about it at, at a council meeting before August 2nd.
Okay. Yeah, because I would like to see everybody else's thoughts, because that usually.
But more importantly, more importantly, you know these, how these meetings work. If you have way too many issues on it, you're not going to get through anything, so you really need to pick the ones, the ones that you all agree are the top priority, and then work on that in advance.
Land development codes.
Yes.
In general.
Well, like, when a new development comes, or, you know, they're sort of linked up, you know, this one is in four, and that one's 4.5, and this one's 20-foot, and that one's 25, and then, you know, those sorts of things.
Do you have anything else to add, Mr. Trace?
Okay.
Good. Mr. Manzares, your light is on, are you wanting to?
Oh, no, they stuck it way over here.
Okay. Councilmember Askew.
I'm good, Mayor, thank you.
Councilmember Matheny.
I'm glad Mr. Askew is back. The mayor forgot, the mayor forgot your name, you've been gone so long, he doesn't remember. The only comment I had is something I had talked to about, to the city manager this week, actually, was Osceola County has a, has a part in the agenda process, right after roll call, before presentations, and they toss the meeting over to the county manager and say, county manager, are there any revisions to the agenda? And that's the point when he would then chime in and say, he's adding, subtracting, changing, scrivener's error, whatever, like, right up front, and then they adopt the agenda. Like, seeing how we've been having this a lot, stuff pulled and people waiting, and, you know, I'd like to see that, like we did today, kind of become a permanent part of the agenda process, and I don't know how the other council members feel. See two nodding heads, three.
Good to go.
So we good with that?
Thank you, council.
And I, and I would like to have it before the presentations, just because sometimes our presentations are pretty lengthy.
All right.
So, great, that's all I have.
Thank you. I do not have anything new. Information section, report section, Thursday, June 17th, there will be a city council workshop at 3:00 PM in City Hall Council Chambers, Thursday, June 24th.